Six o'clock in Lee, New Hampshire. Beautiful Lee, New Hampshire. Welcome to the Select Board. Meeting October 18th.
Twenty nineteen, I think. Karen, Catherine found the minutes.
I want to start off by introducing our new town administrator, Mr. Andy Robertson, right here.
Good evening.
Yay!
Pleased to be here.
Welcome, Andy.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
We're very pleased to have him and looking forward to doing some great things. I also would like to thank, I don't know how many people, who helped put on breakfast this past Sunday. It was very successful. Scott, if you don't mind, maybe give us the numbers. How many people and so on attended?
Well, the people that paid, that's all I know. It's one hundred and forty-nine adults and seventeen children.
Oh, that's great.
Anyway, they worked very, very hard to put that breakfast on. I can tell you from starting on later, latter part of Friday, moving into Saturday, they worked really hard. And we appreciate all the efforts. And it was certainly very successful. Move into public comment. If anybody would like to stand up and make a comment, you can raise your hand. I will recognize you. You'll come to the podium. You'll face the Select Board, and you'll have three minutes to make a comment. I would request that if your comment is relative to an item that's already on the agenda, then you can wait for that item to come up for discussion. John Tepin?
I'm John Tepin, 27 Stepping Stones Road. The request for reports to be included in the annual report was sent out last week. Compiling the annual report is a big job for the Select Board office, and I do not want my comments to be taken as a slight against this work. The second paragraph of the request reads, quote, "Submissions are limited to one eight-and-a-half-by-eleven page. Anyone who submits more than one page, as described below, may be asked to edit their information," end quote. This is a reasonable procedure to help control the printing costs. It is the next sentence that is a problem. It reads, quote, "There also may be additional editing from this office," end quote. This has been the practice for many years. Some editing has been done in the past without consulting with contributor. I know because it's happened to me. But I do not want to dig up the past. I want to focus on the practice from now on. The Select Board has no authority to make changes to the reports of other elected officials without those officials' approval. The legislative body should receive the reports as they were authorized by each independently elected body. The Select Board Office should not edit other reports without the consent of the originator. This is just plain courtesy. Suggestions for edits are still appropriate because all of us can, at times, benefit from an outside viewpoint. If the suggestions can be rejected or approved before publication, the residents of Lee will be reading the report that the originator intended. I'm asking the Select Board to make this their annual report editing policy. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Comments? Anybody have questions?
Sounds plausible. It sounds... I can see why we limit to a page to control printing costs. And yes, it's only courtesy. And they know the information better than we do. So if there's something that's inappropriate or too long or something, we should give it back to them and say, you know, please edit this back to, you know, a shorter amount. Because if there's terms or things in there that need to stay, that's their choice. If they want to cut some certain things to make it longer beneath the page, that's fine. In terms of content, that's their content, so.
Okay. Anyone else to public comment? All right, we're gonna move out. And I'm gonna start by reading a segment from a public hearing, which is as part of the cable franchise renewal proceedings between the town in Lee, New Hampshire, and Comcast of Maine and New Hampshire Incorporated, pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 53-C:3-A. "The town is holding a public hearing on the proposed First Amendment to the Maine 9-2016 Renewal Cable Television Franchise Agreement." Now, I can tell you, this is not edge-of-your-seat stuff that I'm gonna read to you here, but we've got to do it. It's required. "The purpose of today's hearing is to receive the public's input on the proposed amendment to the cable television franchise with the cable operator in our community, Lee. The Select Board is the franchising authority under New Hampshire law. Our town engaged in a process to determine whether Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire, Inc. has complied with the provisions of the current cable television franchise agreement. We have reached a proposed amendment to the current cable television franchise agreement that would extend the term of the agreement until May 8, 2031. The Board has scheduled this public hearing to consider, in accordance with RSA 53-C:3-A: the financial ability of Comcast to perform, Comcast's ability to provide adequate and technically sound facilities, equipment, and signal quality, adequate channel capacity and appropriate facilities for public, educational, or governmental use, the prohibition of discrimination among customers of basic service, reasonable service quality in terms of available technology, subscriber interest and cost, construction and installation that conforms to applicable state and federal laws and regulations in the National Electric Safety Code, a competent staff able to provide prompt, adequate service and to respond comprehensively to customers' complaints or problems, and reasonable rules and policies for line extensions and disconnects, customer deposits and billing practices. The public has been invited to attend this hearing through the public notice, which was posted two weeks before the hearing on September 28, 2021. The proposed amendment, the current cable television franchise agreement, have been available during that time for public review. Any resident or representative of a local organization who wishes to speak will have that opportunity tonight. Please note that some topics are not included in the amendment or the current cable television franchise agreement, such as cable rates and channel selection, as the town has no jurisdiction over those items. Likewise, the cable TV franchise agreement does not deal with telephone service or Internet service provided by Comcast, as those are also outside the jurisdiction of the town." If you've digested all that... If anyone would like to come forward and provide input regarding the proposal, please come forward now.
Do we have to declare the hearing open?
We should. He kind of did. Outofficially.
Outofficially. I hear that a little bit.
I'm Sally Fleming. I live in Osprey, Lee and Lee. I just had a question, and that is, why would you extend this for ten years? For ten more years? This company, it seems to be kind of the lowest-tech company around. And if you're extending their services for the schools and for... This is just for the municipal use. I just don't understand why you would choose such a low-grade company. They don't have fiber optics going on, and we've got them coming in down the road. And that's really my basic... That's my question. I just don't understand that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody got any responses?
They're the only game in the town at the moment.
At the moment, but ten years from now is a long time.
I don't believe the agreement is exclusive. Don't believe that.
It's not exclusive.
So if some other entity came into the town and wanted to, like a Metrocast or Atlantic or whatever, they can surely do that, so.
And then what would happen to our agreement?
It still would be in place.
So we'd still be paying for it?
Well, we don't... The consumer is the one that's paying for it. Town doesn't pay.
It would still be paid for.
The town...
Yeah.
The town pays for that even when we use.
Well, that's Internet. Because we don't pay for any cable. Cable is included for free.
Just seems like a long way when everything's being developed so quickly and much more high-tech.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There are no more comments. Public hearing is now closed. We'll return to the meeting of the Select Board.
Give stuff first.
So, Select Board, I move to approve the First Amendment to the Maine 9-2016 Renewal Cable Television Franchise Agreement with Comcast. Can I get a second? Second?
Yeah, I'll second. I agree with Karen about the time. And I just want to make a point that we can... I don't know what our options are. Speaking of the contract agreement. But I guess as long as we have other options. Okay. All right, yes, I'll second your motion. Sorry. I can't get loud.
We'll go roll call vote. Selectman Bugby, yes. Select person Casper. Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes. So moving on. Jessica Goldair and James Lonano.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for adding us to the agenda. I appreciate it. My name is James Lonano. I'm a resident here in Lee. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Girl Scouts Troop 62764. We have submitted a request to use available space at the Public Safety Complex for our troop meetings. Let me give you a little bit of info about this troop. It's brand-new. There was no first-grade Daisy troop in the Oyster River area, so we formed one. Currently, in assist... For first-grade girls in the Oyster River area. Currently, we have six girls in the troop. The maximum troop size would be ten. Jessica and I are co-leaders. We had to undergo a background check. I'm CPR certified. We would be trying to meet twice a month on Monday. As in, we would do the Mondays opposite the Select Board meeting to reduce the amount of foot traffic in the building. Hour-long meetings from 5:15 to 6:15. Our troop is insured under the Greater Council, Girl Scout Council of the Green and White Mountains. Our meetings would be contained to the designated space. This is not where... You're not gonna have kids running around in the parking lot. Parents will pick up and drop off at the room itself. We would start every meeting by the entire group going to use the bathrooms. There's nobody wandering the halls. And obviously respectful of the fact that this is a working firehouse, a working police station. The volume would be kept down to ensure that we're not disrupting our neighbors. And in fact, if the chiefs are up for it, we'd love to have the girls take a tour of the facilities. But they do understand it is a place of business. It is a place of work with very important things going on. Lastly, as far as COVID protocols, the Girl Scouts of America mandates that if we're indoors, that we'd be wearing masks. So all the girls and leaders, adult leaders regardless, the vaccination status would be masked. We would maintain at least three feet of social distancing. And we, as a group, would wipe down all the surfaces at the conclusion of each meeting and leave no trace. The room would be left exactly the way we found it, if not better. That's what we would strive for. So I'm happy to answer any questions, address any concerns. But again, thank you for concluding us on the agenda tonight.
Questions?
Nope, I'm okay with it.
Concerns? Okay, make a motion. Make a motion to...
It's okay.
I'm sorry?
You don't need a motion if you don't want to.
Don't need a motion?
It's okay.
Okay, so all of them forward.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your meeting.
Thank you very much.
Dawn Jeans, Conservation Commission.
You probably have before you an alternate member candidate application for Martin Nelson. And he's been at our last meeting. An extremely capable person. We look forward to having him be serving with us on the committee. Retired military with tons of experience in multiple states and locations. Has great skills, and he'll be a great asset to the Conservation Commission and to the town. So I wholeheartedly hope you accept his nomination, so.
Comments?
No, I know Martin.
You know?
Great guy, so.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion for the approval of Mr... What's his last name or something?
Nelson.
Nelson.
Nelson. Mr. Nelson for the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that. Should I say anything about the item?
Roll call vote. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
I still...
I know. We'll take care of that the next night.
Perfect. We'll look forward to it.
Karen Rossi.
I'm here tonight for the name... The naming of the newest subdivision in town. What I... So in your packet, you'll see the regulation that requires that we name the road after historic significance of the property. So with that, I reached out to Randy Stevens and Pat Jenkins, and I got suggestions from them. Unfortunately, most of the suggestions have already been used up, which leaves us with the choice of Bryson Lane. Bryson Lane was on the... It was the one, two, three... Fifth owner previous to this owner of the property. And that's what the developer would like to name the road, Bryson Lane. So I'm here tonight hopefully for approval for that. The other choices have already been taken throughout town, so. Leaves us with Bryson.
Do we have an option in the future to think of new ways to name roads that might be more open to other pathways? Who is in... Sorry. Who's in charge? Who decides the determining factor of how we name roads?
So the subdivision regulations, which was amended by the Select Board back in 1998, issue the guidelines for naming of town subdivisions, subdivision roads, and possibly other names as well. And number one, initial consideration should be given to the name of the original owner of the subdivision parcel, especially if the owner has a longtime resident in her respective figure in town, such as Captain Parker Drive. And if the owner... Original owner is not well-known or did not live in the property very long, then consideration might be given to the subsequent owner, who is a notable leader in town, such as Sackett Road. If property is not associated with any notable owner, then consideration would be... Should be granted, given to the property associated in a relationship to some historic event, such as Lowry Drive. And then it goes on.
Yeah.
So like your road as an example.
Yes, which none of us like.
Yep. Nor did the... Nor did the Felber. But historically, that was a very well-known owner of that land many, many years ago. And the town historian at the time, Dick Wellington, was adamant that that was the name of the road.
Yes, I remember that. I think my only concern is that when we name them after landowners of the previous in the past, you're limiting yourself to a very small population. And I just wonder if that's really representing all of Lee in the best way. So it would be interesting, I think, for us to revisit, especially when we're running low on names and, you know, to revisit how we do that as we think of things differently.
Sure. You want to revisit that policy?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'm fine with that name right now. I think that's important. Before, I just... I'm just saying that it'd be good to put on the agenda.
I can collect some policies from other communities, if you'd like, for the Board to review.
That would be excellent.
Sure. Sure.
Just remember, they're guidelines.
Yes.
Guidelines are not laws, not rules, not orders, so. I have a question. And I've asked this question before, so I want clarification.
Oh, one.
Yeah, you better sit down. You're using Bryson Lane. Why not Bryson Road, Bryson Street, Bryson Boulevard, Bryson...
So that is a great question. I did not pick the lane that you real entered in. So how we address that...
There's different rules for different kinds of...
Yes.
Well, I read the Pecan Etta. We've seen that, but...
Um...
Lanes and drive.
Lanes and ways and... So for traveled ways in Lee, subdivision roads dead ends.
Wait a minute. I think that's me, right?
It is. Way. Avenues. Okay. Private roads should be called lanes or ways. Public roads that are relatively narrow, short, and dead end should be called lanes or ways. Public throughways or connector roads should be called roads, as in Mass Road. Subdivision roads should be called drives, lanes, but not roads.
Some of that was also part of the 911 definitions for emergency response. They advised on what to name those roads.
I knew what they were getting into later.
So what could be a drive? Because it's a subdivision.
It... So it... So the... It could be a drive or a lane, but not a road. So that's a... This Board can change that if they wish. So it could be Bryson Lane, as opposed to Bryson... It could be Bryson Lane. It could be Bryson Drive, but not Bryson Road.
Okay. Just... Do you have a preference? Well, which one rolls off your tongue much nicer?
Or it could be Bryson...
Rolls off...
It could be Bryson Way, because it's public roads that are relatively narrow, short, only seven hundred feet, and dead end, which it is, should also be called lanes or ways.
I mean, if you go down this, they all roll off your tongue.
Yeah. Bryson Way. Could we ask the Public Works Director, Piazza? There you go.
Well, what's cheaper to make a sign? Way or Lane? Way is the only three letters. Lane is four, so that's gonna cost us more money.
The developer is the one developing it.
I'm just kidding. I know.
He pays the first sign, and then we pay the signs after. There you go.
Do you have any number of how many means and how many ways we have in Lee? This is to be...
We could ask the public if they have any idea who it is.
Bryson Lane, Bryson Way.
I don't personally think we should call the road Bryson because it's someone's first name, and those signs always get stolen.
Oh, that's a really...
Well, what's his last name? That's his last name.
That is his last name.
But it's somebody else's first name.
But Bryson nowadays has turned into a popular name, so it's one of the road signs that gets stolen.
What's the other people on that list? There was Wadley. There was something else.
And it doesn't have to be a person. It could be some important pieces.
Emerson, Davis, Fernald, Wadley.
Well, Wadley, that's a wild one, though.
Yep. That was a problem, as we've already gone through.
Well, that was Tate-Agub Corner. We can call it Tate-Agub.
I understand what Steve is saying, but it's better than something like Tate-Agub.
Well, it's the ones we have.
Yeah. Correct. That's a list of what we have back when we made this ordinance.
So we got Wadley. What was the other ones?
Emerson. When we have a Captain Smith, Emerson.
We already have that. Something that's unique.
Fernald.
Fernald? That's a Nottingham name, Wadley.
And we have Fernald's Corner already, which is that area.
Yeah.
So Randy's List. So the word Chick Trucking, Strong, Anderson, Inland Acres, Southern Acres, Real Properties, Chester-Bryson, and Fernalds. So Bryson is the best choice.
Well, if it gets stolen, then Steve has to replace it again, so.
We have three years before. It would be our responsibility.
So you hope that those names have gone through college at that point, as I was saying?
Yes.
Don't you just do it when the plane comes to you? Ah, there it is. Thoughts?
I don't know.
I think we're giving a lot of time to this, and it's...
It's a important thing. It's gonna be different.
I agree. Do we... Do we take more time and actually, like, give it the time it needs? Or do we just...
Make a roll call vote.
On what?
Ah, okay. Move to appropriate naming the new road located in the new ten-lot subdivision on Fox Garrison slash Caleb Highway, Bryson Lane. Can I get a second? I'll second it.
You can't move it and second it. You can't do that.
Would you like Bryson Way?
Well, the thing is sticking to my thing is Steve's comment, so... That's what's sticking for me.
Does Steve have a suggestion what it should be named?
Chip.
No.
Chick Lane? You don't think that'll be stolen?
Right.
And that's the development... That's the person selling it for developments, so.
So people steal the Captain Parker sign all the time. They steal the Jacob Lane sign all the time. Joe Ford's sign just got stolen.
So they're gonna steal whatever we put there.
I'm gonna steal Chick.
Okay.
I think Bryson Lane is a fine name. We just have to realize that maybe going forward, we're always using people's names.
Is there anything else on the list below that? I'm for Bryson Lane. No?
No, there's nothing.
I'll second it.
That's two. We've got it.
She's only... You gotta do a vote.
Fernald was below that.
Yeah, that's really Nottingham. Just associate that name with Nottingham.
Yes, all over Nottingham.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
You didn't vote.
We did vote.
Well, I thought we did it.
No, you got a motion in a second.
I mean, okay, so we'll take a vote. Selectmen Buckby is unfortunate. Select person Casper.
Yes.
Ekman Brown, yes.
Thank you.
Now I've lost my agenda, I hope you people will cry yourself.
There you go.
I got it, okay, here we go. And ARPA funds discussion. That's got Selectmen Buckby, why don't you start that discussion?
What?
ARPA funds.
We were discussing.
Why am I doing this?
Because.
I did not put this on the agenda, what?
Someone wanted to talk about it.
Not me.
We wanted to talk about the the ARPA funds in relation to how we're going to use them and how we're going to decide and what our priorities are so that we could start to disperse the funds if possible for things related to safety.
I see.
So I think we talked about. Well, it I don't, I think it was probably me to judge it by the fact that I feel more passionate about it. My concern is that if we have safety issues like um with carbon dioxide and things like that and they need to be taken care of, that we want to be able to take care of those things quickly, but we also need to be able to look at all the different things that need to be managed. So I think we were going to discuss, we had to discuss in public how we were going to determine what we could start spending money on. My suggestion was that we focus on safety first and things that are are will keep the people that work here and people live here safe as quickly as possible.
So give us an example of one year's safety.
The fire chief came and spoke to us about the carbon monoxide as the um fire trucks idle and that we don't have a proper ventilation system. So we were looking into that in depth and it would be important to know um if that's an option, if that turns out that that is a need that we have, that we can go ahead and do that quickly because if it's a problem, it's a problem now and should be handled quickly.
Well, I would imagine that we will have. Chiefs, et cetera, come forward with what they are gonna request under this this funding act, right? I mean, that's what's gonna happen and then we'll look at it.
Chief Lemon has always already come in.
Yes.
Ah, they've already come in.
Chief Lemon has already come in and asked.
Okay, so so where we are right now is we'll say hey. Tell the department heads that we they need to submit their requests relative to these ones. And then we'll take it up, we'll take it up at the next meeting.
If the public has any other suggestions, I think like we said, safety first and then focusing on um most important needs that need to be met. Does that make sense?
Sounds fine.
That gives everyone an opportunity to bring forward.
I don't know what the restriction is on the on the funds. I mean, one of the one of the items that popped back into my mind recently is where are we on uh having handicap access in our buildings, et cetera, et cetera? And I don't know if these funds can be used for that or not, to be honest with you. But I I do know that we we have been talking about being uh compliant for quite some time and we need to we need to see where we are with getting there.
I I don't know with regard to handicap access, I am familiar with two ventilation projects, uh one for a library and one for an old school building that's used as a town offices that fit very nicely into that category.
Okay. So we'll get the request, they'll tell us what they want and then we'll go from there.
There's different baskets of ARPA funding for different things, there's some for water, some for ventilation, and then there's some that are just from revenue loss and then those are more flexible. So we could determine what amounts go to where and then decide what what um projects need to be done quickly while working on the budget for the following year where we'll deal with things that aren't as crisis.
Okay.
Do you think all those things will fall out when we finish, well, when we get team to do our financial planning tool? But I'm okay with it using it for safety things. I just think we need to.
Yeah.
I just think we need to come up with a list because just because somebody submitted the thing first doesn't mean you're necessarily gonna do it. You wanna see what all the particular need is and then rate it appropriately, so. And the thing is, is I remember this two hundred and eighty six thousand, something like that.
Forty, right?
That was turned thirty now.
Okay, whatever it was, but that's the first payment, then we get another one next year, so. Almost half a million to do stuff.
Okay, so we get we solicit the request and then we'll we'll get into what we do with the money.
The counties have also been given significant funding. I was at a Rockingham County meeting uh probably a week and a half ago and they announced that they were receiving sixty three million dollars and they had no idea what they were going to do with it.
Which is why we need to know quickly since they're asking.
Right, so you there may be some interest in seeing what Stratford County has and.
I'm gonna do a tail into my head.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, moving on. Oh my, Katrin Casper. Bike path update.
Yes, so um I've spoken to Stratford um Regional Planning Commission about the possibility of having a bike path. We're not looking for something super fancy and expensive, just a wider shoulder so that people can either run or go biking. Um, I have talked to Steve about it in the past. Um, one of the things they suggested is that if we think about it as a connector between U and H and one twenty five, they've been looking for a east to west corridor for a while, so they would have a lot more funding for us. They have found in the past with these kinds of projects, if there is need and we've gone through the maps and looked at the um areas and he does, they do feel very strongly that this could go forward, that we could get up to eighty percent funding. So our total would be um between somewhere between fifteen and a hundred thousand is kind of the the estimate. Um, but it's possible in some cases to get a hundred percent, it's very rare. Um, and so just something for us to think about in the future as we as we go forward because it will open up um the potential for people to bike and run to and from Durham, also from our areas here. It will help give us a little more safety and space in the side areas. I know when I pass a bike, there is no place for me to go but the other lane. And so that and there are a lot of people that bike ride and a lot of people, more people would bike ride if they felt safe.
First off, when you say a bike bike path, does a bike path go in both directions or is there two bike paths?
Yeah, they're thinking about expanding the road and stuff, you're just putting, you're just basically paving wider. So you're you're just having a um, because there's a lot of different kinds of bike paths. There's some that can go through the woods, there's some that can have like whole separate areas and and those can get complicated. This is just basically um widening the road and having a larger space after the white line that is paved and safe. So that right now, if you're biking and you have to go to the other side of the white line, you're in a ditch or you're in gravel, which a lot of bikes can't handle and it's also hard when you're running and walking your dog and things like that.
But it would be on both sides of the road, so they would go this way and they would come back this way.
That's the that's the plan right now, everything's open to discussion and um, you know, but that seemed like the most affordable and likely and they again have funding and are very excited to look for projects to spend on.
And they have to be maintained to a certain degree, do they not?
So it's a state road, we would have to do the uh, did we do the plow in that? No, so what did we have to make him? I apologize, Steve. Sorry to make you, I tried to figure out what all the issues were earlier.
If it's on a state road, we won't maintain anything because they're already plowing it. So if you put sidewalks in, then you start running into the problem because they won't maintain any sidewalk that falls back on us. So even the condition of the shoulders is their baby. Yeah, so like the, they're gonna call it a bike lane, it wasn't really a bike lane, it was just wide shoulders on one way from New Market to Durham. That's all, that was a state project, but it was to make it safer to ride bikes and it's state maintained all that, except for from the Durham Town Line and the New Market or Harmony Homes to New Market. Those sidewalks are maintained by Durham slash New Market.
They were saying that U and H might help us as well because they do also want that same ability to bike more so that, you know, we could talk with them as well and see. But we wouldn't have a huge expense change.
No, the only thing I'd caution is if they offer. The DOT will offer a certain grant because New Market looked into putting shoulders from downtown to New Fields and they accepted the grant, did the engineering work on it, figured out it was gonna cost too much money and backed out. The problem was is they accepted the money, so they had to go forward with the project no matter the cost, you know, they had to repay the grant, so. Don't jump into a grant.
Make sure you know the numbers.
Make sure you read it really well first.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
What is the right away, you know, this is a current question, right away on that road?
So the the state roads are, they're viatic easements and viatic rightaways, they don't own the right away like we do. So we only own the right away in like Bryson.
Yeah.
Lane, Way, or Daniels Drive. Wednesday Hill Road, we don't own the right away, we just have the right to pass and the right to maintain. So the state's gonna have to eminent domain land and buy land in order to make it work.
And everybody has to move their mailboxes back.
Or the state will move them back, but yes.
Okay.
That's why it's important to talk about.
But it's sixty feet, sorry.
Sixty feet?
Yeah, one fifty five would be sixty feet.
Would the bike path go all the way down one fifty five, cross over one fifty two and go into Epping? Or do you visualize it going here, going down Thompson Mill, Lee Hill and Thompson Mill to Route one twenty five?
When he talked about it um with me first, we talked about just to our misty, messy corner, um just because that's a whole separate issue um from U and H and then going down Wadley Falls. Um, but I think all that stuff needs to get, is it Wadley Falls?
No.
North River. Where are you going?
Lee Hook?
Maybe it was Lee Hook, it was, I I apologize.
Lee Hook State.
Yes, there's one that they've been wanting to do anyway for a while and then he was thinking of that, but I think really it would be a matter of us discussing, you know, what, where do we want to have that? Where where is the need most? When I looked at the need base that he has in the map, and I can send you a copy of that, um it has red lines and yellow lines for where, you know, their concern is green where it's not. So he would want to fill in those areas where it's dangerous so that all those green areas can be used that are safe.
I was just thinking, because if we connected to one twenty five from here, it would be Lee Hill Road to Thompson Mill and then we would have to pay.
Yeah, he was discussing it on the on the state roads and then.
Strict just state roads?
Yeah, in in this conversation, but again, we'll have to look into it and decide as a, you know, as a town, whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna look at and then figure out the funding.
If you can send me that, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right, what I'd like to do next uh for for uh the um Denise, Denise, if you don't mind, is to take the uh the naming of the Little River River Park Baseball Field. Okay. So if uh I don't have the names of the people. Little River Park Baseball Field naming.
Hi, I'm Leslie Schimberg and I'm here with my husband, Yola Schimberg, my son, Matthew Schimberg, and my father, Joe Sarno. And we just were requesting to name the Little River Park, the baseball field at Little River Park.
Would you close in on that microphone just a little bit?
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ah, it's better. So we want to name, we're asking to name the baseball field at Little River Park for my brother, Matthew Sarno, passed away in two thousand and five of leukemia. He was a serious athlete specifically for baseball. And now that my husband and and I are raising our family here in the community, um we know other young families who are living here and then also other people in the community and direct surrounding communities who have fond memories and of the memory of my brother, so we thought that would be a good idea, keeping that legacy and memory alive.
I'm I'm sorry. But this, as I understood, it was a request for naming the field.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, the baseball field.
Okay. And and that is for, that was for your your brother?
Right, Matthew Sarno.
Okay. And.
We just, we're not aware that it has a name, so we wanted to.
It does not have a name.
See, it's good.
Baseball field.
Right.
So you're requesting that the field be named after your brother?
Right.
Your brother uh passed away uh a while back uh suffering from Lou Gehrig's disease.
Leukemia, yeah, uh back in two thousand and five.
And he was seventeen years old.
He was.
Got it. Any questions? Is that a no?
That's a, I need to think about it.
Okay. Okay, so so. I was pretty sure that we would have to dwell on it a little bit because I don't know if there's anybody else out there that's that's would like to do that or would have a reason to do that or want to do that. And and we would just need to do our homework a little bit, I think, before we decide on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So. We can, we can make a decision by next meeting, can we?
Sure, we can think about it, yeah.
I'm sorry?
We can think about it, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to return for the next meeting.
Sure.
And we'll see if we can get you an answer for that.
Okay.
All right?
And we're available for any other information that you need for it as well.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Denise, the rest got to pick to you. Atlantic Broadband.
Oh, Atlantic Broadband. So we received, I think Amy knows more about Atlantic Broadband, but we received a letter, email from our attorneys, town attorneys, saying that they were um coming into the area. They were going to um bring cable television and internet into the town. But um I don't know this company, um we could, you know, we could go into discussions with them for different.
I have some background um with Atlantic Broadband in the community I live in, they came in and took over from Metro Cast. And I would, I would characterize it as a downgrade in service uh fairly quickly. They are apparently making some effort to replace cable um in communities. In Deerfield, we're in the same situation as you are, residents come to us and say, why don't you shop and see if you can attract more cable companies and we call every cable provider uh in the country and they all say, we're not really interested in a town your size and leave us in the lurch. So we've hung onto Atlantic Broadband because they're the only game in town as you're already well aware. But I I don't think that there are any um, they wouldn't make people any happier than Comcast.
And we don't have any, there's no needs that are being, not being met that would never be met because they came along.
Right, I I think if they guarantee you they're gonna, you know, put uh high fiber cable in or something like that, then by all means, it it might be great, but that hasn't happened in Deerfield yet.
Well, I think the difference would be, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna agree with you, but I'm also gonna disagree with you because um they might be worse, but competition always breeds better things for the consumer. And as we just talked about the Comcast agreement we just did, that's not inclusive. You know, we can bring in other companies and something might be better for the consumer if they have now choice. Because if Comcast sees geez, you know, we're getting, you know, some of our customers are going to Atlantic, maybe they start to sharpen their pencil a little bit more and right now they're monopolizing and you know what happens when they're monopolizing? And every single January, they jack up the prices. So I'm in favor of exploring something with them, if anything, to give the consumer a choice. And one of the things and one of the people that commented during public session in terms of this whole agreement is um cable TV is changing. There was an announcement today that the Major League Baseball is going to streaming services, so they aren't gonna sell their stuff. They still sell it through Comcast and most other providers, but they're gonna have their own streaming service. So I think the big thing going forward is gonna be internet access. So I think even if their cable TV stinks, Andy, uh maybe their internet is gonna be okay, I don't know. But I think I would like to give the uh consumer a choice in terms of who they choose, you know? If Atlantic is so terrible, they'll just stay with Comcast, they'll just switch back to Comcast, but at least they gave us, gives them a choice because right now they get no choice.
Well, I can certainly talk to Anthony, Anthony or Brandon at DTC and and let him know that the community is interested in in moving forward with the negotiation.
Well, that's that's just me, you've got two other voices there.
No, I agree, I think, I I I think the point, the point about having competition is really the major, is really the major issue if we're gonna get any benefit at all out of it because they're not real big on lowering rates. But certainly if we can bring some competition in, uh it it might be, I mean, we have nothing to lose by it really, so let's do it.
And Major League is actually streaming as a number of people unfortunately found out a weekend or two ago with Red Sox.
Yeah, yeah, there was, what was it, that new service?
It's the L L B uh.
Yeah, but there was another one, there's something, something else, they had that one game that's, yeah, that was irritating.
Yeah, oh, right.
But at least they had a, what is it, a freebie preview or something that particular, there's a segment that they had a preview, but yeah, so. Competition is good.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, so it's one of my my favorite ones, the update on digitizing records.
I don't have much of an update.
We were hoping to have one, yeah.
I know, we were really hoping to have more to tell, um still trying. Natalie had reported to me that she, you know, she's still working on the equipment and I'm not, I I tried to explain to her that's not what I'm trying to get an update on. But um Andy did get an update as far as if we were to um go back into contract, into a contract with Stratford County Regional, it would be about the same price, fifty nine or something?
They're they're not increasing their rate at all for the coming year, but it was still fairly significant. It was five thousand five hundred ninety two dollars based on the town's population.
So that's still hanging out there and it still worries me that if we're not a paying member, that we will get booted from the list of getting that.
I I personally think that we have so many other things that we can benefit by being related to them, especially when we're looking into all these different areas and we have all this money that needs to be spent and if we have connections, we have a much better chance of getting them. I think it's five thousand five hundred forty nine dollars well worth spending personally. I think it'd be, it would be important to get involved.
Just remember in terms of the money that we dropped it because we were getting no benefit from that money.
Right, I think we weren't utilizing the services and also there wasn't a huge influx of caps, we just got.
Well, we were using services because they charged for just about everything that we were using, so there was no benefit, so.
Correct.
That's the big thing, so I'd rather put five thousand dollars toward a digitizing project versus having to pay them five thousand for them to help us possibly. I think it needs to be explored more.
Okay.
I'm not.
I'll still try to get more.
I'm not pool pooling the idea, I'm just like, you know, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. We don't necessarily have to wait for a third party to come in. So that's just my thought, so.
Keep in mind a digitizing project is like thirty grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. But then you have control over what you're digitizing, you're not waiting for somebody else to come in, a third party, oh no, we can't get to you because we're doing Durham because they're more popular than you are. So they've got all those towns in Stratford County, you know, I don't think we're gonna be top on their list. be top on their list, we're probably gonna be low on their list.
Wow, we're not gonna be on the list.
Yeah, exactly.
And we do our own project, so...
But first, I'd like to add one.
I remember, was it two, three years ago, Julie got a quote for doing that. It was twenty, maybe it's more expensive now, but I'd rather just go ahead and contract with the firm to come in and just do everything and just be done with that.
We also don't have a voice in the county in the same way. I go and I can vote on certain things having to do with transportation, but otherwise, we don't have a lot of say in big projects that are affecting things like our waterways and the things, you know, the things that connect us as a community. And that concerns me because we don't have a representative, we don't have a vote, we don't have a say. And there are some really important things that are happening, you know, as far as as we're, as we're watching, you know, water levels rise and Hampton getting flooded and those rivers coming up and a lot of things happening. So I, I think it's important that we look into not just, you know, I paid this much money and I get this much money back, but what are we losing as a community in our inability to have a say in our future?
You're supposed to be on both, you're elected to both committees. Did you know that?
I'm elected, yes, I'm elected for transportation and the other one I went to, I'm trying to think what it's called. But I can't vote on the smaller details and I can't, like, I don't, I count as a core member in two places. So, I just, you know, it's important, one thing that they said is that when they get money from the towns and that's how they get their grants is based on, we have this much municipal. So, I guess it just depends on how, looking at how the money is spent. And yes, if you wanna make a map, it is cheaper if that's all you're doing, but if you're thinking about how you're structuring your community.
When did we start this project?
What project? We haven't started a project.
Well, but when did we, yeah, when did we put it on the table to start moving?
When I got here.
Yeah, well, we first got the emails many months ago about the possibility, of this possibility of being part of this, this grant.
Okay.
And then it kinda just went quiet, not on our end, on their end, you know, we just haven't been able to flush out...
Yeah, when we talked about the grant, but we talked about digitizing.
Oh, God.
A long time ago.
Five years ago.
A long time ago. We started, that's when we started our digitizing effort.
We actually had it in the budget one year.
Right.
And then we couldn't get to it. And so then the next year, it went away.
So, it would be, would be nice to get something started.
Well, it sounds like it needs more inspiration.
Yes, I know. Okay, well, we're trying to explore.
Yes, it's a good, bad, not only your digitization.
I, I was gonna actually ask at the meetings, I was gonna be with people and then it's, we didn't have a core, so we didn't have a meeting, so why did we get to talk to anyone?
So we have a tax rate setting and MRI classification and salary survey update on the agenda here.
Can I just, I'm just gonna take a second and try to get on, try to get home, okay. I'm sorry, it's what?
You're still up.
Okay. We can, just real quick, I'll just do the MRI update before we do the tax rate setting.
Very good.
I was hoping to get that. Oh, it's sent out sometime today or over the weekend. I know it's done. She's just making it into a report form. And I just didn't, I was gonna try to poke her today, but I just didn't have time. So, I know it's done and we're just waiting for the report and then we can take a look at that.
So can you send it to us when she gets it so we can take a look?
Yep. And then the tax rate, as you could see in the agenda, we have the preliminary tax rate. And there are two things going on in that, well, one thing that happened in that determination is the under, the overlay was increased based on a recommendation from Scott Marsh from twenty thousand to two hundred thousand. And that was, and DRA agreed after I explained, because we had, we just had a recent revow and because of the potential tax abatements and possibly increasing the elderly exemption in the spring and possible hardship abatements that are gonna be coming down the pike, that we might wanna increase that to that amount. So, I did that on, in here and that's, but it still came out to three thousand and twenty-two eleven. If you wanted to reduce it further, we have...
Two billion, three sixty-nine, six thirty-five of unassigned fund balance. And the sheets I handed out were just, I took three levels of property in town and used that preliminary two-eleven rate, just to give you an idea of what it might actually do to individuals.
It's devastating on the mobile home and I just don't, I don't know how we can...
It's so out of proportion for the lesser value.
Yeah, and they're already, it's already struggled, it's already, and then to have that, I mean, I just, it's heartbreaking. I don't know how else we can handle it.
Well, that's where the abatements come in.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You've got the fund balance that we can use, I don't know how much you traditionally used. I'm sure you're all familiar with the DRA recommendation of five to ten and GOFa is eight to seventeen. I think a lot of towns try to stay in the ten percent retention range.
Yep.
What would the impact of that be? Do you have that?
It's still a quarter for a hundred thousand?
Bring it to twenty-one something?
It's probably changed a little bit because of...
We're at twelve seventy-nine right now, let's get to the information page here. So, a dollar is seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars fund balance. Fifty cents is three hundred sixty-four dollars, nine sixty, and ten cents is seventy-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars of fund balance.
So, humor me and put in a quarter of a million.
You'll get back to that.
Is that money only available for this sort of thing, or is that available for...
It's the unassigned fund balance.
Unassigned.
Well, you only, yeah, you could just... Where's my tax rate gone here? He said two hundred and fifty million.
What, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Oh, oh.
Not million. You're off of a, a little bit there.
We have that much.
We have quite that much.
We don't have that much, fifteen million, we wouldn't have to worry about anything.
Yes.
We could fix all our bills.
We don't, even if it's above fifteen, that's much that we have to raise, two hundred and fifty million.
I don't think that's...
Hopefully, I think DRA isn't looking or I've talked to her.
Right? Crying.
Which would give you a tax rate of twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So, it would take off, what was it, two-eleven?
It was two-eleven.
So, seventy-seven, so twenty-three, thirty-three cents?
Which that translates?
The reason, the reason I'm picking a quarter of a million is what we've traditionally done in the past is whatever was dumped in from the previous operating budget, that's what we kinda go with. And I think it was two thirty-nine, I think, something like that.
And that would...
And that's uncharted, of course.
Twenty-one sounds nicer than twenty-two, for sure.
I think your treasury typically looks for two million dollars or so as well.
The, the board has a policy that we will keep at least one point five million in there, so we're way above that.
Yeah, you're still, you're at eleven point four, two percent for retention percentage, which is still, you know, on the high side of the reputations.
Well, the thing also after, and Denise has probably told you this, but we got to pay the telephone company there.
Oh, yes.
So we have to kind of keep a little bit of a buffer in there.
Yes.
We get, we get to pay it over two years, but I don't wanna necessarily draw it down to the...
First payment is due in December.
I'm familiar with the process. I'm familiar with the same process.
Yes, 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 you know, many towns are.
Okay, that's all.
So I would propose that we use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the unassigned fund balance to reduce the tax rate to the twenty-one seventy-seven, I think you said, Andy?
Yes, just double check on that. But it is, it would be twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, and that is with the two hundred thousand dollar overlay as well.
Sound like a motion, do I second that?
I have a capless motion.
Okay, now second that. Should we roll call?
I agree.
Roll call?
Motion passes.
We have a vote again. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor.
Very well. I will talk to our representative, Penny Touche, at DRA tomorrow and get this finalized.
Okay. So we should have enough time so that the tax collector can get the bills out, so they can do different, similar first, right?
Yep, we're good.
Thanks.
I know they get cranky if you wait till the December deadline to...
Yeah, well, I wanna give them enough time because they do it themselves, so you need to give them enough time to stuff how many thousands of bills they have to send out, so.
I have one miscellaneous item.
Great.
Which I, this is the four K projector subject matter. So I spoke to Chris at Stimuli and I passed, I don't know if you all saw the email, and he explained how the audience would not see four K resolution. The audience, the remote audience would not see four K. And if someone comes in here and does not have the PC, if their PC or their video source does not, cannot, does not, how do I, how do I put this?
It's not compatible with the work?
It's not compatible and will not project four K, then the audience won't see four K.
The what, I'm sorry?
The audience won't see four K.
Okay.
Here. So, again, not just talking to Beck Bay, but talking with Chris, just doesn't see the need to have four K. However, he gave you the estimate to do it if we want to, and it's gonna be another three thousand dollars.
It's, for me personally, it's very hard to spend that on something we use sometimes when this worked perfectly fine, as we have, you know, fallen apart.
Right, and I would like to mention that just seeing this three thousand dollar figure and that, I mean, as far as money goes, we, we're hurting for updates and computers in, in the town offices, bad. We had hit, well, we've got two, one went down today for the count. The assessor's computer is done. Liz's computer is on the way out, every time she turns it on, she has trouble with it. And then when we, when I found the list of, you know, the schedule we're supposed to be on to replacing computers, it hasn't been really kept up to speed. And so we're, we're behind the ball in replacing computers.
Do we have some money?
Well, why don't you, why don't you...
Well, I talked to Joanne about, you know, finagling some for this emergency situation.
How about if you then put together, here's what we need to get back on the ball with an estimate, and then bring it to us and then we'll see what we do.
They pretty much have that.
Yeah, I think that that's right at our fingertips, so we just need to get some estimates of the actual cost at this time. And the, the big problem is, I think there are some two thousand fourteen machines that are running Windows Seven. That was, the assessor's computer falls into that case and they're just worn out. He was showing me the error messages he was getting as I walked in the door this morning. And the same with the other computer, there are two that are in particularly bad shape, they're both two thousand fourteen machines that are both running Windows Seven, which, you know, had an end of life well over a year ago. There's no updates for those Windows Seven machines anymore.
Yeah. And we're just wasting time that we're paying someone for and valuable.
Let's just look at what it takes to upgrade the...
Well, hopefully we have money in the budget to do some of this emergency fixing.
I'm a little bit dump out it, because we keep putting money in the budget every year for doing these things. And we should be, with all those particular funds, we should be totally on track, so I'm a little bit perplexed.
Well, it's not that we don't have the money, we don't know that yet. We haven't looked to see how much it's gonna take.
Yeah, but it should've been taken care of.
It wasn't a priority for us, now it's a priority.
So, one of the things I would like us to ask for, thank you, Andy, that was very good of you.
Yeah.
I want a list of all the systems we have and what the replacement cycle is, and what ones we need to do and what ones we don't need to do.
To get out a plan.
Uh, 'cause we need to develop a plan so that every year, we put in some, whatever the monies are needed to do those replacements, those rolling replacements. So, we should not be in this situation.
Well, we got, we got new programs that come at us, you know, all, all the time that we're gonna, well, you know, you can make a face by the fact that it's...
That's not the people, that's not the people, though. That's not new people and new computers.
No, it's not new people, they're absolutely right. I'm not asking, I'm not saying it's new people, we need to just look at, here's what we got. It doesn't do the job. And, and I don't know what the impact, for example, of the new planning tool is gonna be on, on the system. I mean, it's most certainly not...
It's in Excel. If the computer can run Excel, it'll load the program.
Yeah, anyway.
So, back to the other issue. That was a sneaky segue there, Denise. Back to the other issue, my particular issue with this is that technology that we just purchased is old. And going forward, yes, some computers now cannot display in four K, but going forward, that's what this is gonna be displaying in. So we're gonna have old technology that we just bought, I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of spending the money to get a new one with something that's relatively new, four K, they're already out with eight K now. So, I, I think we're just buying something that's old.
I don't know, did anybody propose one that's newer and so we could vote on it and say, yeah, let's go ahead?
Yes, yes.
And we tried, we thought we were getting that, which is when this happened to you up in the office to make sure it was four K, and we thought that it was, and so we said yes, but I think that's a challenge.
That's the other thing that I'm still irritated about, that we specifically asked if it was four K and we were told it was. Because the total price for all that stuff was like almost five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, obviously, a lot of the money went to that other part of the project and not to this, so...
So this was under a thousand dollars and will get us through a period of time, while we're dealing with all these other computer issues, is it possible that we take this and use it for the next few years and then we upgrade to a higher system when we're in a...
I can return this. We've used it once.
I would like to return and buy the new one. And that, that particular projector right there is not as good as the one that's downstairs that we bought years ago.
No, there is.
So, that tells you something, so, okay. Source of funds?
What did we use last one?
Yeah, what did we take from to get the first part?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Well, what's the, what, I mean, we're gonna turn that one back in, we'll get X for it, right?
Yeah, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, something like that.
And what's the one we want?
Three thousand.
Does it cost?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, so twenty-two hundred dollars for... I'm quite certain if I twenty-two hundred and...
Let's, let's charge it to the line on for computer stuff under IT, and if we can go over, we'll go over. Because I think we're gonna have other funds that we're gonna need for these computer upgrades if we're having these kind of problems.
You wanna put it in equipment?
Yeah, that's equipment. So if it's over, it's over, but I think we've got other issues that we need to deal with that's gonna make it over anyway, so.
Okay. Do you feel better now? You feel okay?
No, I'm still irritated about that we were told it was four K, it's not, I'm still... No, I'm still irritated about that we were told it was four K. It's not. I'm still irritated.
That's communication. I'm not sure.
I want to place blame, but I'm gonna restrain myself and not place blame. Just be irritated.
You be irritated. We'll let that be however it is. All right.
All right. Let's see, let's move on. I think we've covered everything there. Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. No, it's your turn. You can have all of them.
Can I get a second?
She's given to you.
Second, second, yes, correct.
She gave me the second.
Yes, she did. She handed it on a silicon.
Muffler on there and muffler.
Yes, and muffled.
And put A, okay.
Are we getting a roll call?
Roll call, votes, select from Buckby?
Yes.
Select from select person Casper?
Yes.
Selecting Brown, yes, motion passes.
All of your writings signed?
Yeah. I just don't wanna get caught up in that signing while we were still working.
So really, Andy, with your examples, example two is kind of like mid-range. Their taxes are a little bit more, but the significant changes are the ones on the high end and the low end.
Well, I think proportion of the high. Really gets.
Yeah.
Porch bigger, yeah.
Totally unfair.
I can, I'll do this over again with the new final rate, just for your athletes. Right with people.
Understand.
Usually by the end of the evening, my signature will be.
You haven't seen her signature, have you? Look at her signature.
I'm very proud of my signature. You will not be wasting any time.
Oh, goodness.
This one sounds cute. I don't know how that got separated, but.
You're proud of your signature?
I'm proud of my ease of of time spent. My quickness to finish up. You are not proud of my signature.
You guys don't follow instructions, do you?
What was that supposed to do?
You have to initial the bottom. It's a federal thing, so we need all the pages to sign all the bottom.
Thank you. Well, we're not doing the notary of.
I've been trained by the best and she's sitting in the back room.
That is for you right there, Daniel.
Thank you. Love that grant.
There you go.
Yeah, we leave all the pictures.
Well, we're getting them.
Oh, before I forget, lights on the north side of the town hall building. I believe you've been asked, can we get those installed soon as possible? The reason is the entrance for the meeting room is on that side and there's no lights.
That's true.
And we had people that were following.
Are the lights out? There's two.
No, 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 the new.
The new what?
The north side.
Are there two lights out? There's two lights on that side of the building and they're out?
Well, there's no lights there now.
Okay.
So if there's fixtures but the light's out, that's a different problem. But if that's just new bulbs or whatever, can we at least put those in?
And if they're.
Oh, yes, that's right. That's you now. Steve, can you get one of the people to take a look at it and see if it just falls, just replace them or so?
Thank you.
I think there's lights. It's not much of a problem. They all worked when we moved in, but.
Those fixtures haven't been turned on?
No, they're automatic. They might be.
Anything else out of order?
That's not my job.
Right.
Keeping them in order is Denise's job. I just have to sign.
But she needs more work to do, so I'm glad.
Well, she didn't do anything in it, so whatever, so.
Wow.
Well, that's what you told me.
Who didn't do anything?
You did. You told me she didn't do anything.
I've never said those words in my life.
I'm just kidding.
Denise said that.
I sent Denise a very nice message. She was a good one. So.
It'd be nice if you just sent it and didn't need credit for it.
Excuse me? Did it do what?
I said it'd be nice if you just sent it and didn't need credit for it. Sent it as a nice.
No, I was just I was just picking on Denise, but I sent her a very nice email. So, yeah, I want kudos for that, so.
My goodness, two points. I'm not saying a thing. I.
That'll be the thing.
Oh.
As you can see, Andy, we have way too much fun here, so.
We're a happily dysfunctional family. We all flip flops.
Is that the case I would work? The thing I've always told, this particular arrangement is like being married to two other people. Because as people come and go, it's a different kind of relationship. It's very, very unique.
I added a whole bunch of special sauce.
We had a five prison board and I think that smoothed out those transitions a little, but.
No, I just had all kinds of bumps and bruises.
Denise is like. Did you use special sauce?
Special sauce. The hurricane reference. Do we have any special sauce?
Here you are.
Cute, kind of sour. Do you wanna have?
Special sauces.
No, it's a sign.
You're quick.
I did, but that was just, it has, that's your piece of paper.
That's mine? Your Girl Scout's.
The other thing is, you haven't been using all your tools of the trade, Mr. Brown.
Huh? What?
You haven't been using all your tools of the trade.
No, dear, you don't know. You can't let Mr. Buckby get bored because he gets in a trouble.
You don't wanna hand that to me. There you go.
That's dangerous.
Look at that. I just signed away a little bit. Do you think we could get a bigger one?
Huh?
Do you think we could get a bigger one?
I can leave it on where I think the board is, right?
Yeah, no, definitely not.
Mr. Brown, you were the one that provided that, didn't you? You provided that, didn't you?
Yeah.
I got the label on it, so.
But we do need the dish to bang it into it. We have pressure. Yeah, that's. We're starting to relieve some stress.
Scared which I said?
Definitely. We have a lot here and we.
That's a nice.
I believe that. You could really bang some chicken or something.
Is that everything? I hope.
You checked all these, right?
I don't need this. I'll go do this stuff at the house.
I should all that.
Deal with.
Huh?
Non-public.
Yes, that's right. We're going into non-public. Okay, motion to enter into non-public session for New Hampshire RSA ninety-one hyphen A code of three Roman numerals two. Lowercase a for N times three. Roll call vote required. Selectman Buckby?
Second and yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Here we go.
We can get a choice.
I would be say the same thing. If you have something to add, add it.
Okay.
I can ignore you just as well as you. But all the mayor, but it's also up to the chair in terms of who speaks and who doesn't.
Oh, yeah.
You've got comments.
Certainly try to kiss the chair side.
We want, okay, you go ahead.
I move to seal the minutes for the non-public session.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay.
I was in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You wanna do the other thing? The select board would like you to look at a developing a policy for reimbursable expenses for the select board. Specifically, if they need supplies, office supplies to do their job at home, like ink cartridges, paper, stuff like that. And also in terms of when they travel out of the town to get reimbursed for their travel expenses. Like going to NHMA conference, they should be getting mileage versus the IRS rate. So I don't think there's any policy. Pretty sure there isn't.
Specifically for the board.
And I know those particular things have been done before because I've taken advantage of them. So let's put something out there so that we can take a look at it and so it's clear. So when new members come on, they know what is appropriate and what is not appropriate.
You could tweak the current policy.
I don't think we have one about select board, no, for select board expenses and stuff like that.
No, but we have it for expenses, I think.
All right, we'll take a look.
I'll take a look and see what I can find that we have, Andy.
And also, you've got him on the managers group, right? So.
Yep.
There's somebody out there that's got one, so.
Yeah.
I was amazed at how much time certain town administrators seem to spend on the managers.
I'm off a lot.
I've heard that.
Twenty-five posts in say a forty-eight hour period, so a couple pages long.
The other thing is. The other thing is, in, you know what happens when you assume something, but one of the things that should be on the salary study, did they look at all the positions in town, every single one of them? Cause I know the benefited ones and the part-time ones, but did they do the other ones? Like for the treasurer and the select board?
We don't know.
No?
No.
All right.
It was just employees.
So I guess I would request that someone maybe, some of the towns that we're kind of close to, give them a call and see what they pay their treasurer and what the duties are of the treasurer. And also the select board in terms of, you know, what their annual thing is. One of the things the select board wants to look at is in terms of, are we being paid appropriately?
And the ABC committee and the others.
And you, if you wanna include those two?
I would think so. Any anything then when we're paying, just to make sure we're paying it fair.
You said the ABC?
Yeah.
Having said that, any local communities that pay their budget committee? I can certainly, I'll certainly do a goal of.
ABC, the trustees of the trust funds and the cemetery trustees. Right now, there's budget money and for those, and it's just a hundred dollars per year paid in March, so.
That's the sticky I gave you.
Excuse me?
That was the sticky that I gave you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So see what you find.
Well, the number zero everywhere else when they were doing.
I can tell you what Deerfield pays. If you're the chair, you get six hundred dollars a year as a selectman. If you're not the chair, you get four hundred dollars a year.
Interesting. How the chair ups the game, huh? The new.
Well, it's kind of the same thing in the, what is it, the school board. The chair gets a certain amount and the person that's in charge of the negotiating committee gets a certain amount and then the rest of the members get less.
That makes sense. We take more work.
But it's based on how much work those particular people are doing. They're trying to compensate.
I'll also contact a few towns outside of the immediate area. I have this recollection that Central Harbor, I think it is, actually pays their select board members upwards of ten thousand dollars a year.
We're not looking to that.
We're not looking for a super.
Don't even look.
Just a reasonable, to get a reasonable number of what it is, just the next person that comes.
No, I can surely do that.
Or the sharing with the other two select members in there is the, when the last time we did this, like three or four years ago, we were kind of in the middle in terms of the select board. So just trying to see in terms of what other people. We haven't done an increase, just like, you know, the other staff have got some little bits is what we could afford, but this year we're looking at the whole salary enhancement thing, so. Listen, Katrina needs money to send her kids to college, so.
Just to send them care packages.
Oh, care packages only?
Wait, and did you see our salary? It's not up to send them anywhere to college.
Well, how about a case of macaroni cheese?
Oh, no. Oh, dear.
Here it comes. Remaining a germ.
The macaroni cheese put him over the edge.
It did, it did.